Call this meeting of the Board of Alderman to order. Roll call please Heather.
Alderman Horman.
Yep.
Alderman Lane.
Here.
Alderman Mattley.
Here.
Alderman Borat here. Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Wilkerson.
We have a forum this evening, official business can't take place. Join me to place allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's no questions, motion will be in order to accept the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the, yeah.
I have a motion to second to accept the consent agenda as written. All those in favor say aye.
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 Count table over twelve fifteen.
Any comments, questions?
Say. See a lot of ash was tree trimming buildings in there. Catching us up for last year or something? This year already?
I think actually some of those were working back, I think they closed the building or something.
Ah, okay. Make a motion to the fifty, count table over oh fifteen, the amount of experience, fifty thousand, three hundred nine dollars and thirty four cents.
Second.
I have a motion to second to accept the count table over twelve fifteen, amount of three hundred fifty thousand, three hundred nine dollars and thirty four cents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. At this point, I'll open the floor for comments from citizens. See if you have any comments to make. Approach the mic, take your name and address to record and take your comments. Anybody? Hearing no comments, I'll close that. Report from the city prosecutor.
Good evening.
April Wilson.
Hi Jesus. I think it's been about a year since I've been here, but we did not have May court this month, so it was a good opportunity to come down. I had a chance to train with law enforcement today for a couple of hours. Just going back over some of the basics with several new officers. We've been E-file now for two years, two, year and a half? January, maybe a year and a half. That hasn't really changed too much for law enforcement and prosecutor's office to date. It could change in the future. We cannot file by ticket. Right now, we're able to just, they're able to write the sum of the stones in those two and we'll file those hard copy. So unless something changes with that, that hasn't changed too much. There had been some discussion earlier in the year about moving court to Boone County because of E-file. And Judge Bradley quickly put the kibosh on that, said he likes kind of this in Centralia, we run a tight ship. So I think as long as Judge Bradley's here, we've got a lot of support in Boone County courthouse, at least to keep court located here in Centralia, which is nice. And I was just kind of teasing beforehand, the United States Department of Justice released a two hundred and fifteen plus page report on Ferguson earlier this year. And so I read part of that, just kind of anticipating what the Missouri Supreme Court might do and how it might affect municipal court. And in fact, I think you will see sweeping changes in municipal court. However, I think if they were going to use a template, they could use the city of Centralia as a template. Because pretty much everything they cited is needing reform or change. What are we doing here in the city of Centralia? We don't hold people in jail, we don't try to punish them with huge fines. There's been no directive from the city that chief increase profits by ten percent by writing more tickets, which is a big problem in Ferguson. As the equivalent of Matt Harline goes to the equivalent of Larry Dudgeon and says, you wrote ten percent last year of the budget, we need you to write twenty this year, basically. So, just a lot of things that we don't do, we're not going to probably feel the pinch too much because we're already doing a lot of stuff right, so it's nice to know.
I would have the reporting requirements if they're not a bad day.
Well, what do you mean by reporting? Because we report everything.
Well, but the state now has reporting requirements that they just passed, legislature did, that everybody has to report how they apply to ten, there's a lot of people.
Well, here's what I would say, one benefit we have that a lot, even some of the bigger municipalities don't have is because we have an associate circuit judge and all of our information runs through the circuit clerk's office, we already, they already do, we get audited. They've always done that. I was gonna say, we just passed my nine-year anniversary on Friday. I always remember it because it's my son's birthday, he was here. Was appointed as city prosecutor for the first time when he was one. He's ten.
What happened?
Thank you. So I've been here nine years and we do get audited. And so they keep track of how quickly we're taking in fines, how many cases, what types of disposition. They keep track, they keep all of those numbers. They also are saying like if we're letting stuff pin too long, if we're not meeting the time standard, what other types. Heather, you actually might know more than I do on that.
I mean, all, all I'm really aware of is our municipal audit. I mean, it's not very clean every year. We have our ducks in a row and we don't have any issues with anything that we do court-wise.
But the only thing that, that needs attention from time to time is if there's old warrants. You know, there's still some cases like that mayor filed from ten or fifteen years ago that maybe pending in, well, not now, we cleaned all that stuff up.
All that stuff.
Yeah, so that's, but there might be stuff that I've issued, you know, had warrants issued on my cases that the statute of limitations is run. So we'll go back in and clean some of those up after a month, but. So I'm hoping that that, that even the reporting requirements, because we've already gone to the associate circuit judge and have been. So we have all of our, now they are going to scrap JIS, which will make sense, you know, and you. Which is the system that has always been used on reporting, that is an automatic electronic reporting system that goes down to the Department of Revenue and Missouri State High Patrol. They're going to scrap that and start a new system that I think they're hoping is more compatible with the E-file system that the Missouri Supreme Court and ASCA, Office of State Court Administrators that runs all the clerks up, or not runs, but does all the administrative, so. We'll see how that affects.
That program's pretty well funded. I, I think it'll be different if it will be right back up.
I hope so too. I mean, that's, JIS runs every, judicial information system. I mean, it runs everything and it's how convictions are reported from traffic standpoint, so hopefully that will be just smooth transition.
April, about that transition from JIS, I know Fort Worth was one of the first cities to go on JIS and.
Yes. They've been the test pilot for a lot of things, E-file, JIS.
And, well, one of the things about the original system was there was very little thought given to municipal cases. There were traffic, but anything that was not a standard state charge was just municipal or, you know, less than like other. Have they, have they worked at all, is there anybody talking to the state from the utili, from the, sorry, the municipals? Or is it all just the state talking at municipals?
I think what you're referencing is directly to charge codes.
Yeah, yes, charge codes, exactly.
Yep. Charge codes now on the municipal level, we have a much more detailed list. And so for instance, that miscellaneous, that ninety-nine point oh that was on the end of the charge code, every municipal charge code starts with a nine. And so everything that's ninety-nine was, it was just basically miscellaneous municipal. Well, now, you can go in and you can charge it DWI by drugs, DWI by alcohol, assault third by injury, assault third by apprehension. You're going to be able to go in under those specific charge codes and, you know, speed one to five or one to ten, you know, school zone, following too closely, following too closely with an accident. And now all that goes to the point system and how points are assessed from a municipality standpoint. But certainly you saw the push whenever they started using DWIs as a prior from the municipals so that those would be stacked when they get to the state level. And then some of these reporting issues that Alderman Horman was just referencing, that became more of an issue because more municipalities started utilizing the associate circuit courts, so they had to go to that charge code. So that, I do believe they addressed it to the charge code, which really gave a lot more authority to the municipalities, so, to help them handle cases. Anyway, things are continuing to run fairly smoothly. There's been a few, I guess, here and there, whenever the Judge Bradley one month couldn't get his laptop, of course, to work. And so then he couldn't make documentary, so he's like, I'm writing everything down like I used to, you know. We got through it, we got done. I think other than that, really, we're running pretty, pretty smooth.
However, still able to fall back on the stub.
Yeah. And you know, they have said really that it has generated more work for now than less, but hopefully it'll swing back the other way, I don't know. It's been, I know, a real nightmare for the state courts. We've, we've had a fairly smooth transition, I think.
I hope it works better than when they replaced Sam one and Sam two.
Do you have any questions for April?
Thank you. Enjoyed another year.
All right. Appeal revocation of business license for key yard repairs.
Don't see anyone here, so.
I'm just kidding, I have to walk there.
Okay.
I need, I need my personal protection here.
Watching on the main streets in Centralia.
I'll take your back.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any discussion on key yard repairs? Any information on it?
He hasn't paid his state taxes. Gave him every opportunity, probably too many opportunities for him to argue if he's not here. I would say that the only thing you could do is deny the appeal and then tomorrow we will go serve him with a notice to shut down. Think there's anything left to do?
No, there's nothing left to do. I, I will say in the interest of fair play, can we table the matter till the very last thing to say we gave you till the very last minute we were here?
I think that's appropriate.
I, he's not my brother-in-law, I don't owe him that. But.
Right.
Table the matter till the very last thing. If he shows up, we'll hear. If not, we're where we were.
Okay. My, my understanding that with this particular matter, that ticket out had already been issued, which is going to be for a year.
Yes, sir.
So that, so that he, for operating town business license.
I will also point out that this is, he has never renewed his two thousand and fifteen license. So his license essentially expired December thirty-first of last year, and he's never attempted to renew this one. He's received several notices, he's received penalties on his business license fee, so he's up to sixteen fifty tomorrow.
Sixteen dollars, is what he says?
Yes.
That's it, we're making big money off of this.
Well, the issue is nothing to do with ours.
No.
Right, right.
And I went and talked to him, I went out and talked to him, explained to him all his options, probably gave him more than he deserved. He is a narrative about how he has not been able to get some of his records and therefore not pay his bill. I was not here, but my understanding is that there was a similar, well, not identical, reason for being late last year.
And I don't think that was the first one.
Yeah.
Last year was the fresh year, it was issued a summons for operating business without a license, but it was dimensionally dismissed before because he did his two thousand and fourteen license.
But you need to be behind on this, take sales tax before too.
Is that what this is based off of?
Yes.
Yes, that's essential. May I just state for the record too, we table the matter till we get a dub. No one is here, and we should decide as a body how we're going to go forward.
Right.
And what, and what we think I have a statute of authority to wish to do. Thank you.
We'll address that at the end of the meeting. Okay, act now development report from the Chamber of Commerce. You have a board of directors meeting minutes in your packet.
Part of work getting ready for Anchor Fest. At the end of the last meeting, I had Bill and Mike and Mark sit down. They've been doing this for a number of years, so almost everything was known, but there were a couple of little details about, you know, signs of barricades, that kind of thing. They're, they're new this year, so I think it was valuable.
Anything you want to add, Don?
No.
Okay. Just checking. All right, action agenda, finance and permits licensing, nothing scheduled? Legal?
Uh, first ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the contract to be signed to hire MECO Engineering. They were the company with the highest score in the, of the eight companies that made, it set in qualifications and letters of interest on the Jefferson Street Sidewalk Project. Draft of the contract is in the packet and has been looked at by MoDOT staff and they are okay with us. And we actually have signed copies prepared by MECO here, so we can, you know, theoretically have them in the mail tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
And Scott Bowler from MECO is here in the audience, if any of you have any questions or comments.
Do you have any questions for Scott?
They, they did a really good job of going out, taking photos and making a detailed step-by-step presentation, I think that's.
Alderman Lane, would you give this a simple please? Bill number?
Twenty-seven fifty-six.
I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-six be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Close, continue please.
Bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the City of St. Trade to execute a contract with MECO Engineering Company Incorporated of Hamilton, for consulting engineering, consulting engineering for the Jefferson Street Sidewalk Project. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-six be given a second reading by title only. Sir.
Now the motion is second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-six be given a second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the City of St. Trade to execute a contract with MECO Engineering Company Incorporated of Hamilton, for consulting engineering for the Jefferson Street Sidewalk Project. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-six be adopted by roll call vote. Sir.
Now the motion is second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-six be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Mattley.
Yes.
Alderman Borat.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Horman.
Yes. All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-six passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-eight twelve.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Authorizing the mayor and city clerk of Centralia Missouri to enter into agreement with Christianson Construction of Kingdom City in relating to installation of asphalt overlays on several city streets.
There is an ordinance and a accompanying contract, you know, agreement in the packet. Again, we had, went out for bid, we received three bids, this is below us, the best bid. Christianson has worked for us before, they've done work in other cities and, you know, we, I just think they'll do a good job. We, we talked earlier this year about possible projects to add if we have that leftover money. The bid was pretty close to our, our guess in terms of, we said, we listed at being somewhere around seventy-five dollars a ton with a little wiggle room. And it came in at seventy-four, seventy-eight. So depending upon how well we estimated, my guess is there won't be a lot left over, but maybe we overestimated. Hopefully, there's a little leftover for something else, but. So we recommend, staff recommends accepting the, or to authorize the signing of the agreements to move it forward.
Alderman Borat, would you give this a simple please?
Sure.
Twenty-seven fifty-seven.
I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven be given its first reading by title only.
Selective.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of St. Trade to execute a contract with Christianson Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, related to the installation of asphalt overlay on several streets. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven be given a second reading by title only.
Now the motion is second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven be given a second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of St. Trade to execute a contract with Christianson Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, related to the installation of asphalt overlays on several streets. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Now the motion is second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Mattley.
Yes.
Alderman Borat.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Horman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven passes and now becomes ordinance number? Now the motion is second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven be given a second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Mattley.
Yes.
Alderman Borat.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Horman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-seven passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-eight thirteen.
All right.
I know that Mary had, maybe want to add some comments, it's an extensive discussion as well with the staff at MPUA. But basically, the, the organization has added some additional cities, some actually in Arkansas. And they are asking all of the cities in MPUA to re-adopt a new mutual aid agreement. The mutual aid agreement is an agreement among the cities to help each other out in case of power, large-scale power outages. We've sent cities, sent employees to help other cities and, we, we've had one occasion or two ourselves. But it's a, it's a important part of municipal organization, municipal utilities working together to help each other in times of need.
Does it help people our power cost down as well?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not a huge contributor to that. I mean, other things we get from MPUA, but yeah, if we had to hire in private contractors for all this work. It also assists with, if we're called in, having this agreement makes it easier to receive reimbursement through FMA slash SLE. So it's important to have an up-to-date agreement in place. Did you want to add anything to that, Mary?
Well, as Matt says, this is a renewal of technically a mutual aid program agreement. It does all the things he said, is call a mutual aid agreement, it's not technically, it's something that's involving other cities. We can either request other cities to come and help us in time of disaster, or other cities can come and we can decide not to do it if we choose to regarding if it's too far or just not convenient for us or something. But it's not technically a mutual aid agreement with, with Missouri Public Utility Alliance. The person I spoke to said it was more a term of art, that's what people are used to seeing, that's what they're used to talking about. So that's what they call it, but it's technically not a, something that's involving Missouri Public Utility Alliance as much as it is other cities that, and they're sort of a, they aggregate, collect all the mutual aid agreements in different cities. And they know they're part of the Missouri Public Utility Alliance.
All right. So if we were to send our record crew to another city that had a disaster, who would pay for their deals in, like, with that other city? Or would we continue to pay that dearly?
Well, eventually, if it didn't qualify for any kind of federal assistance, my understanding is that we'd get reimbursed by the city. Probably for their, but just to, but not a hundred percent. There's a.
Four million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, I mean, in, in America, it's right, it's amongst the cities. You have to be in MPUA to get into this mutual aid. But that doesn't mean that if, you know, we're, they're also, we're also members of American Public Power Alliance, so, association. So if there's a, you know, massive outage somewhere in Iowa and we could get there for some reason, we are a good, you know, pick to respond. That, that's also a possibility through any means.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Borat, would you give this a simple please?
Yes. Bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight be given its first reading by title only.
Sir.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Board of Alderman of the City of Centralia, Missouri authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of Centralia, Missouri to sign an MPUA mutual aid program agreement within Missouri Public Utility Alliance, MPUA. I mean that bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight be given its second reading by title only.
Sure. I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight be given a second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close, continue.
A ordinance of the Board of Alderman of the City of Centralia, Missouri authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of Centralia, Missouri to sign an MPUA mutual aid program agreement with this Missouri Public Utility Alliance, MPUA. I mean that bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight be adopted by roll call vote.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Borat.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Horman.
Yes.
Alderman Lane.
Yes.
Alderman Mattley.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-eight passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-eight fourteen.
All right, next is the permitting of final plat of Cobblestone Lake Estates plat three and accepting easements. Also an ordinance that requires two readings.
In your packet, there is an ordinance to approve the Cobblestone Lake Estates plat three, the final plat. We, was, this was reviewed and passed conditionally by the planning and zoning commission back in November of two thousand and fourteen. The conditions have not all been completely met yet. We do not have in hand the, the, proof that the association has been formed and registered with the Secretary of State. Although there is a, we do have a draft of the, the document that will be filed with the Secretary of State's office. The, we're, we're also require a letter of credit to cover the costs of putting in the sidewalks and that is. and that is very close to done.
Hell later than Friday.
We don't, we do not have that in our hand also. So, we have, we have three options. We can read it and leave it to be final adopted at a meeting on June first, we could...
Adopt the whole thing with contingencies?
Adopt the whole thing contingent upon providing the two items mentioned, and then there, I think in the original, there was another stipulation about having the cul-de-sac, but I think right now the plan is to build the, that cul-de-sac, although we don't actually have a plan as to what that cul-de-sac exactly is going to look like. The, the rest, I mean, the street is poured, we, looks like it's going to be, you know, to the extent that we test the streets, it looks like it's in good condition. Now, we've had, we did one sample for a brake test, and it should be at the four thousand PSI by, based on the first two brakes, by the twenty-eight days, which would be Wednesday. So, I'm not, I'm not, I have no concerns about the street, the curving gutters are in place, sewer was done according to specs, and we've got, they've got the plat document except for a couple of, I think the last version had December, the December fourteenth day, or December twenty-first date, whatever it was, two thousand and fourteen instead of...
More recent date?
No, May eighteenth, which would be the day that we could finally adopt it. So, that's, those are, the other thing is defeat it and bring up a new ordinance at the next, another meeting, but...
What's your recommendation?
My, my recommendation is that we go ahead and approve it with conditions, continue conditionally.
So, you said our options were to approve or approve conditionally, or what was the third one?
Well, I don't need, I would not, I would not recommend approving condition, that's not, the other option would be to just read it once, and then recess the meeting until June first. I, I mean, I guess you have technically that legal right to do that, but I would strongly recommend that we don't just approve without any, but not that...
We could disapprove it too.
You could, yeah, and that's what I say, you could defeat it and bring it back again, that's actually the third one I was talking about, you could defeat it and bring it back as an ordinance, so either recess meeting or... Next regularly scheduled meeting, which is a discussion that we're going to have a little bit later, could be as late as June twenty-ninth, which we'll discuss later.
I'm assuming that you will do your due diligence that if we approve this with conditions, they would be fine?
I'd be happy sending you guys out, scan documents to show that it's been done, but...
I think we, I think we'll, we'll trust you for that.
I, I think what you're saying is partly that you can adopt this ordinance, but that doesn't mean that the Planning Zone Commission Chairman, the mayor and the city clerk need to sign the plat, and they can't do any, can't sell lots until they record the plat, that can't happen until it's signed, so these things that are not, still not done, even if you adopt the ordinance, but you don't sign the plat, you don't take care of that, I mean, you, you, it's still, they still need to turn some things in before it can be finally approved.
I see no reason for it back before, I don't know.
Oliver, what?
Did, did you want to say anything? I just wanted to make sure that, the other thing is, I did not, one of the other things that will be done eventually is that they will send us documentation, correct me if I'm wrong, as to the cost of constructing the streets and constructing the...
I have the numbers.
Okay, yeah, well then, and that way the city can capitalize the cost.
I don't have the footages, I figured that you had the footages off the plat.
Oh, right.
I mean, I just pulled them straight out of the checkbook, so if you want them now, I'd be able to do that.
You do, no, I'd like anybody, and that's, it doesn't always have, you've always sent something to us, so.
Okay.
Or, what's in the record is a, looks like an Excel spreadsheet, it's not exactly clear whether we did that or we did that, but we'll get that together.
When did it?
Alright. Oliver, what did you do this one, please? Bill number?
Twenty-seven fifty-nine.
I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-nine be given its first reading by title only.
Selective. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-nine be given its first reading by title only, all of the fairverse act. My host, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final plat of Cobblestone Lake Estates, plat three subdivision, a subdivision of a portion of the southeast quarter of section fifteen, township fifty-one north, range eleven west, in the city of Centralia, Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication to the city of Centralia, Missouri, of the drainage easements, utility easements, and streets right-ofways in said plat as the public property of the city of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-nine be given its reading by, second reading by title only.
Selective.
I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-nine be given its second reading by title only, all of the fairverse act. My host, continue please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final plat of Cobblestone Lake Estates, plat three subdivision, a subdivision of a portion of the southeast quarter of section fifteen, township fifty-one north, range eleven west, in the city of Centralia, Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication to the city of Centralia, Missouri, of the drainage easements, utility easements, streets right-ofway in said plat as the public property of the city of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifty-nine be adopted by a roll call vote.
Selective. I have a motion to second that bill number twenty-seven fifty-nine be adopted by a roll call vote, all of the fairverse act. My host, roll call vote please, sir.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Madley?
Yes.
Alderman Borra?
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifty-nine passes and now becomes ordinance number?
Twenty-eight fifteen.
Just as a follow-up, is anybody willing to make a motion to withhold the signatures from the city until such time as the homeowners of the association is formed and recognized by Missouri Secretary of State's office, and the city has a copy of the letter of credit for twenty-five thousand dollars to cover any cost to build sidewalks in subdivision?
Selective.
I have a motion to second for that motion that Matt made, all of the fairverse act. My host, alright. Alright, purchasing, nothing scheduled? I expect some money this week. Alright, old business, do we have any old business here on top of that? New business, we have a few appointments to make tonight. Took a letter from Angie Taylor, the board president for the Centralia Library Board, she's asked me to appoint three people to the library board to, looks like, replace the board members that are expiring their terms this July first. Those, can I do all these at once, or do I need to do them individually? Okay, I'll just do one, one, that's alright. So, I'd like to appoint Larry Riker, Marilyn Dick, and Crystal Bridman to the Centralia Library Board, crush these.
Larry Riker, did you give those three?
Larry Riker, Marilyn Dick, and Crystal Bridman. That is a three-year term, beginning July first. What's Crystal Bridman? Uh, it looks like Bridman, B-R-I-D-C-M-A-N. And those will replace Jenny Eppertstein, Angie Taylor, and Tina Homsday. Make a motion to approve. Selective. I have a motion to second to approve the mayor's appointment of Larry Riker, Marilyn Dick, and Crystal Bridman to the Centralia Library Board, all of the fairverse act. My host, alright. Alright, I would also like to take this opportunity to appoint Angela Bellary to the credit board to represent the city. This is a one-year appointment, and it will replace David Wilkins, who's currently serving on the credit board. I just called her Angela Bellary, and she seems pretty excited to jump in there and help with the Regional Ethnical Development Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Some may not know Angela, she'd like to stand up and introduce herself.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Did you put, you have the...
No, I'm a big boy, I can make my own decisions, I'm not standing up.
Angela Bellary and Joe Bellary's wife?
Alright. What, what do you do full-time?
I work at Art of Center Mexico, supervisor for the youth program, I do intakes as well for assessments.
Awesome, well, thank you very much. Anybody care to make a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to accept?
Selective. I have a motion to second to accept the mayor's appointment of Angela Bellary to the credit board, all of the fairverse act. My board, meetings are the fourth Tuesday of the month, at six-thirty PM in Boone County Building, right next door to the medical center. Alright. Yep, yep, yep. Right, ah, sorry. As far as the committee chairperson, I've asked Amanda Andrea, fell out of my mind last week, if she would be willing to chair the Public Work and Public Utility Committee, and she's accepted that. And I've spoken with David and Larry, and he's agreed to remain the public safety chair and general building chair. So, I think that's all I have. Matt?
Yep. You up? Okay, I got three items, actually. The first one, net metering, just to make you guys aware, we have had somebody approach the city about putting in a solar array on downtown business cancaids. We, Lynn showing, you know, a great deal of foresight, and you guys, and all of it, have established the rules and the...
Criteria?
Criteria, policies basically for making application and making sure that when such a, a net metering, in other words, it'll generate some electricity at the site, and when they generate more than they need, it will be sold back to the city. They've made provisions for this already, but this is the first one we've ever had done. The, there is some, there will be some net impact on the city's revenue, there'll be some net impact on the city's expenses. The impact on revenue will probably be higher than the impact on the expenses. So, this is the first one we've had, and we'll see how it goes. So far, Mark is, was out there last Friday with the vendor, looking at the site. We're getting, it's a little bit of a learning curve for us, for us, how net meters, how the bidirectional meters work.
Yep.
And they have the panels off, and they're looking at the various, you know, specifics of that particular one. Once the application is made, we have thirty days to act, or it is assumed that they don't get to install. So, we'll, we'll be looking forward to seeing that proposal, going through the process, and...
I think one of, one of the stipulations was that, in the event of the city having to isolate that circuit or somehow turn the power off, is their power generation capacity not going to bleed back into the lines?
On injury?
Injury.
Yeah.
So, that's good. Right. Do you have any type of estimate on what the costs are?
No, for us, no, not really, not anything, not any, most of that is supposed to be borne by, you know, what are the, our costs, should be borne by the app, these equipment.
Thank you very much. Sewer service extension on North Hickman.
I'm not looking for a decision here, although if you guys come to a consensus, that'd be great. There, the Corstow Baptist Church, as you guys probably know, is building a new facility at the corner of North Hickman and, the northwest hole. There is a sewer line, an eight-inch sewer main, that they could tap into with a six-inch lateral, and they could make it work for X dollars. For somewhere in the neighborhood of two X dollars, roughly, they could extend an eight-inch main either directly aligned with the sewer as it is now, which would be more expensive because they tear up North Hickman pretty badly, you'd have to repair it, et cetera. Or they could angle it and add in an extra manhole and take it up, within the right-of-way, but outside of the current built sixteen-foot wide North Hickman Street. Then the, and they've been work, trying to work with the property owner directly in the north to see if he was willing to pitch in, and I don't think he's ever said no, but I don't think they've been able to have a conversation. If he says no, or they never reach him, they're probably going to go with a six-inch. And the next property owner would have, you know, the, the city would be better off if they built the eight-inch line, because that would, that would extend it north, and we've got depth that could extend it, so probably, talking to Mike, maybe as far north as Mocke will be. If, as, if and when the city would ever develop up north that way, which could be fifty years.
It could be fifteen.
Could be fifteen, yeah. So, we have never done any kind of agreement to cooperate, to help put that in, and then recoup those costs later when development occur.
Is that within the city limits already?
All, all this that we're talking about is within the city limits. We're not talking about extending any sewer lines outside the city limits, nor would I be keen on doing so, sewer mains. So, I guess the question is, you know, something for you guys to ponder, and for us to maybe get into much more greater detail, is the idea of, of putting together some sort of agreement to extend that sewer line north. And I haven't talked to them in a couple, probably over now, a week now, so I don't know if there's been any movement on, on...
The property that's north of them that they're trying to contact, what are they doing for sewer now? Do they have a lagoon, or do they have a septic tank, or what's their, do you know?
They're in this...
Because they're, I mean, if they're in the city limits, wouldn't they already be on sewer, some sort of?
No, they are in the city, they're on plate. Are they?
Oh, you're right, they're, they're...
Because I'm, I'm not sure.
Line hasn't moved, just wanted to check.
They are...
North of where the Corstow Baptist Church is going to be built.
That's all. They are not.
I don't think so at all.
They're not.
No.
They're under county jurisdiction.
Oh, okay, you have no control over that, yeah.
They are not.
Yeah.
But they've, 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 they've shown... But they've, they've, they've shown some interest. They owned the property that this was on, so. They recently annexed this property into the city. So...
How soon do you think we'd need to make a decision on that? I heard you said you didn't, weren't looking for a decision tonight.
Yeah, probably...
Next month?
Probably next month, yeah, next month.
So, you're proposing that the city would build the eight-inch sewer?
I'm proposing that an eight-inch sewer would be built and the city would pay the differential cost between what they would have had to pay and what they...
For the six-inch, right?
For the six-inch.
How far is the six, is the eight-inch line from their property at this point?
Uh, right now, it is on North Hickman. And it's at the corner, basically. And they can tap into the line that runs along... There's a stub that goes along North Fairground or, because we don't want it tapping into the manhole, but there's a short stub that goes along North Fairgrounds that they can tap into the six-inch line. Or they can extend the eight-inch line, if, and the eight-inch line, if they built it, we would, they, just like any developer, we would accept it after they're done. If we did this, when the, we have, we have to also establish some sort of, you know, in the agreement would be...
Repay the structure or something like that?
Whoever would pay, whoever would come on would pay us back for that. I don't know if we could, you know, how much, how much, how much cost of, you know, the cost of money increases, you know?
Do we know approximately how many feet, a hundred feet or six hundred feet or this many?
We know, I don't know, but it's...
Sorry, I didn't...
Yeah, no, I should, it's, I'm gonna say, what, three hundred feet?
I'm not sure, but I'm just thinking that it's probably in the order of about two-fifty or three-hundred.
Yeah. I'll get that in just a minute, but, the, anyway, so we have not done this before. It is forward-thinking, but it also puts us into a, you know, a position of...
Setting a precedent?
Definitely setting a precedent, but it... The most, the ugliest kind of way, or the most cynical way of looking at it is, could be seen as some kind of subsidy development, if we don't recoup not only the costs, the differential costs, but the appropriate amount of interest on that differential cost. But since the, in the, whoever develops the north...
They don't have any options but to tie into the Hickman sewer.
Right, they're gonna have to tie into the Hickman sewer.
And that sewer is going to be with the intention of it being served because Allen Street...
Exactly.
Runs out very quickly before you can serve very much more than what repays us this.
Exactly. But the church, you know, they don't, I'm not...
But the church, you say there is a stub that goes along Fairgrounds?
There is, a short stub that goes along Fairgrounds.
And where does it come from?
It, there's a, the line right now runs along North Hickman. And it stops at, it stops just, you know, right there at the intersection. There's a manhole that is on the, about the north end of that intersection.
Okay.
Uh, the, so, so we would, you know, it's... It, we, we would be looking, you know, we'd be preparing for the future, but we'd also be sticking our necks out just a little bit compared to what we've done in the past.
Well, at some point, Hickman's going to be dug up and the sewer is going to be extended because there aren't any other options for serving that area. So, the question is, do we do it now or do we do it later?
I would prefer to do it now and do it the right way.
That would be done right here.
But, you know...
Here's your, an idea of what the length is here in a second. It is... Two-hundred and thirteen plus, yeah, it's gonna be right at, that's gonna be a little bit over three hundred feet.
Can we consider this an investment into the future?
Yes. And it, it would help make sure it gets done right now, is pushed done in pieces.
Because...
And that, the, the property owner to the north, it depends upon how, how, if he's thinking of developing that property next year, there's a no-brainer, but I doubt that's the case.
I doubt that's the case. Yeah.
Anyway, that's... Was there any, is there, what else would you like me to find out between now and June first?
Is this being thought of because it's a church, or would you all do this for any individual?
I think if any development that goes on, we're gonna take it.
I came to you and I asked with help for extending the sewer, the gas line main, and I was told that that was just my baby.
Well, I think that, well, we don't run the gas.
Well, I understand, but...
I think that's because we don't operate the gas.
You know, if you get a building permit in the city of Centraria, you assume that you have all utility services at your site when a building permit is issued.
And the other question in that case was, you wanted an answer like, you know, immediately. And the, the gas line, I mean, I don't know, I guess they, we don't operate the gas utilities to make a difference there. We operate the sewer utility. And we have a plan for our sewer utility. I don't have a plan for the gas utility because I don't know. And I don't know what the next piece is. But, you know, the idea of making, of cooperating in a planned way to make sure the utilities are throughout the city, that makes sense. Generally speaking, you know, the notion is that what you brought up, brought to us, you know, wasn't, wasn't crazy, but it wasn't something we had time, and you didn't really have time to wait, as I remember.
Right. Is there only one other?
No, one other, just sort of a note. We did not get a, did not have any additional applicants for an inter, this other. However, unless the council's upset or worried about, I had a citizen who, Heidi Sims, who came to me, she had been very involved in the city government in Blue Springs, when she used to work there, and actually talked to the city administrator, city manager up there, and they were good, good friends. She asked if she and her daughter could do some sort of project for the city. So, without any objection, I was going to have them work on looking at recycling options to bring back to the city, you know, board of aldermen. The daughter is a, is fourteen, but they'll be working together.
It's kind of like a volunteer type sort of...
You know, keep an eye, yeah, something she just wanted to get involved. If she was twenty-one, I probably wouldn't have brought it to this.
Right.
This, this will involve making phone calls and we'll talk and interview and make sure that we know what we're doing, if there may ever go out there.
Well, one question that comes to my mind, just dealt with this down at work, you have a volunteer comes in and they trip on floor carpet or whatever, injure themselves. As a volunteer, are they covered by workman's comp? Or...
As long as it's, as long as we know they're volunteering for us, yeah.
Every year during our work comp audit, they do ask for the number of people on reserve, many of them are volunteers that we have, so it is included in our work comp.
She might be inspecting their bailers or anything.
Right.
Yes, I'm exaggerating my point.
No, I understand.
There are, there are hazards walking around in the recycling facilities.
Okay, this is something to think about. I'm all, I'm all for that, but we're involved here for, you know, service or whatever.
Right, and I'm making, working actively, trying to have better connections and get started on it sooner next year, so. Get better applicants for this. And one of the, and then we have that asthma and rise button, or wherever you want to do that.
We'll cover that on the air.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other, thank you. We've been asked by the, hell, we've been asked by the park board to allow kayak races on the July fourth, the July fourth celebration. We have a, we specifically forbid this in our ordinances under section in Parks twenty-one and five.
Where, yeah, that's my question, where, where are they?
Are they carrying this or what?
Down Main Street.
In the city pond.
In the soul pond, south.
In, oh. City pond, where?
The, one that they're not doing the fishing, in, in, where the, in the, right, city park, the one where they have all the...
So, they're gonna shoot the fireworks over?
Yes, but not during fireworks.
Right.
During the day.
I thought it was North Pond or...
One they're not doing fishing, I think they're, the one that's not quite...
The one close to South Pond?
I had, I had my note written down, which I couldn't find, and I have, it's, it's the, is there a pond that you would allow it that you wouldn't at the other one?
Well, the last one is, is not real big. I mean, that's the thing with North Pond, but I don't know for sure.
I would think the North Pond would be better suited for kayaks.
Neither one of them big, but...
No, I thought that neither one of, yeah, right, neither one of them.
I mean, they're both pretty small.
So, here's why you need to do this.
Since we have a specific ordinance that forbids this, they're asking for us to...
Variants?
Yeah. If the great people of town, they spend money here, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, cause trouble down the road, because other groups will want to do that.
Yeah.
Only if the board sees that any group has the same authority to take risks with the city pond that the park board does.
Well...
Could I recommend that the, the board consider recommending to them that instead they consider holding the kayak portion at Tri-City Lake, which is outside city limits and doesn't require a labor, and is large enough to handle a kayak race?
But that doesn't bring them to town to spend their money.
Sure, because we're still the closest towns, isn't it?
Wow. So, if they're willing to do it in city park, I'm willing to let them and let them spend their money here. And, and the park board is already...
Do we have to have special entrance for them, Matt?
I don't know.
Yeah, I know parks.
If somebody gets hurt or drowns in the lake?
You don't do them.
Somebody needs to check into that.
Yeah, I would definitely check into that.
Has to be reasonable.
I'm saying we gotta, I know they spoke to you.
Right.
Did not ask, didn't ask, yeah.
More to follow.
Alright, we do have time before July fourth.
Yeah.
I think we'll probably have to discuss it again next meeting.
Yeah. Alright.
I've encouraged...
They're gonna need an answer pretty quick or they're gonna make other arrangements.
Right, right. They've got a meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Heather?
Yes, I received a call today from Vicki Hartzler's office, and we have set up what they call Boone County Staff Listening Post, it's gonna be held here in the city council chambers on, what's it, May? Yeah, June twenty-fourth. You're right. From eleven-thirty to one P M. So, I've got it set up for here. It's up in the public. Anybody that wants to come in?
Okay. Well, on that note, as they arise, there will be a way of annual training from June twelfth through the twenty-eighth. So, I will miss the June fifteenth committee meeting, and that is gonna be out on June twenty-second, the normal day for the council meeting. So, we're looking at possibly rescheduling the June council meeting to the twenty-ninth, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month.
If, I would just say, if we do that, it might be, might be a good idea to recess meeting, because that's a long time between...
Yeah, we could recess this meeting until June first, fourth, the eighth.
Yeah, one other, yeah, one other note. The, the city ordinance establishes that there shall be a meeting held at city hall on the third Monday of each month. You may establish by duly appointed, duly adopted motion of an annual off-the-meeting, additional meeting late sometimes. But of course, if nobody shows up for the meeting on the fifteenth, there won't be a quorum.
On the twenty-second?
On the fifteenth, normally the meeting would be on the fifteenth.
Okay, right.
And city code says there shall be a meeting on the fifteenth. There is no provision for canceling that meeting?
Or rescheduling that meeting?
Or, yeah, technically rescheduling that meeting. I'm, we had, Merritt and I had this discussion. If nobody shows up, I think the point is moot. The question is, do we have any legal obligation to advertise that meeting that wouldn't happen? Because that would be...
Is it something we need to, like, look at changing that ordinance to allow for special circumstances? I don't know.
I, then we could, we could approach...
What we can't do tonight, but, you know...
What, how do we do, when we, every Monday that, is it in the code?
It's in the code that it goes to the next day. What I would suggest is that we recess the meeting to the first of the eighth, as to your pleasure. Call a special meeting for the twenty-ninth of the night by, by a motion. And then, by a separate motion, cancel the meeting on the third. And I guess the only thing is that if some citizen, I, I doubt there's any, I don't think anyone could see that they've been aggrieved by not having a meeting on the fifteenth. Merritt, I'm the lawyer, I'm just the, I'm the, I'm the bureaucrat. I'm trained to be a bureaucrat, not a lawyer.
You're, you're sort of announcing it, I mean, that's what you're proposing, if it's announced, that's probably good enough, that, that, that we can, you wouldn't have to change the ordinance if, if you continue to have a meeting on the, I mean, if you put the minimal sunshine law requirements in there on the agenda for the fifteenth, there was nobody that showed up, so you didn't have a meeting, there was no quorum, and then you could, you could have a motion, you could adopt even tonight, that would say you're gonna have a meeting, regular meeting really, in effect, on June twenty-ninth, there's an additional meeting. On the June twenty-ninth. And then you could have a recess meeting on the June first or June eighth, committee meeting nights.
So, it would be the pleasure of the board for recess of this meeting, the first or the eighth. And right before you decide. I have business. I, which is to say we, will have business on the first Monday of June. Probably to swear in, undo your office full-time.
So, your preference is June one?
Yes. I'm good with that. Everybody okay with June first?
Yeah.
Recessing this meeting till June first?
Okay.
Alright, now the, moving the regular board meeting to the... Right, and I'll be moving the regular board meetings to the twenty-ninth of June.
Do I need a motion to that?
There'd be a, need to be a motion.
Motion to make an additional meeting on the twenty-ninth of November.
Yes.
So I make a motion to recess this meeting until June first and then.
Yep, that's, that's, yep, I have a motion.
Sorry.
In a second to recess.
If we recess the meeting as a meeting end?
Yeah, we're better.
Yeah, we probably, you might rather wanna do the first round.
You wanna do that? Okay. We'll, we'll table that motion till the end.
But we have a meeting on June fifteenth without me and Merrick here. I know I guess you're.
Okay, uh, meeting on the twenty-ninth, a motion will be in order.
I make a motion that we.
Additional meeting.
Have additional meeting.
I have a motion, second, to have an additional council meeting on the twenty-eighth of June, I'll vote for it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, in addition to that, I need a separate motion to cancel the meeting on the fifteenth. Is that right, Mayor?
No, I mean, you wouldn't, you'd, it'd be, it's, you know, you don't, no one, okay. There's no, there's not a quorum if it's another meeting.
So, there'll be a meeting on the fifteenth.
Yes.
For those that show up, but, uh, probably won't be a quorum.
Recommend, recommend that people not show up.
Recommend, yeah, I mean, I can't tell people not to come to the meeting, you know.
I gotta, I'll make sure I come.
All right, all right.
It's good, I appreciate it.
Take good notes, take good meetings.
Did, did the motion include having an additional meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we're having an additional meeting on the twenty-ninth. Okay.
You haven't said, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay. Okay. Any additional as may arises?
I have one thing before we get into the Keith Keller thing.
Okay.
Your, your probably greeting and fire sign guard, uh, please say, with respect to, uh, Allison Brooks' departure and at the school board meeting, how superintendent, this is my guess, superintendent said there is no heir apparent. And at that time, he was right. I spoke with the superintendent, I, I have someone in mind, they have not informed their employer, as I anticipate they will do tomorrow. I think Allison is on the books as full-time until, I suppose, after we sign. I have a resignation in my pocket. So what'll probably happen is this. We'll probably swear in. Probably swear in, uh, new person, I'd like to, that Monday night. Is there a question, Merrick?
I'm just saying, I'm probably, the mayor would need to make the appointment first, assuming that happens.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll do it the right way.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I guess I'm just giving you the heads up, that's where I'm at, and, uh, unless something happens in Falls Park, feel pretty good about where we are.
So that'll be June first, gonna make the appointment.
Yes, sir.
Swear me.
Yes, sir. Thing on where we are, but I, I feel pretty good about where we are and where we're going and, and for logistical reasons, that person swore in on the first of June, will probably move out some part-time to finish up whatever she's got built. So there we have it.
Is this gonna be the S R O position?
It is, Mayor. It is.
All right.
But South Pond.
South Pond?
South Pond.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing to do with the pond, that's my real answer. The kayak races would take place on the south.
Swear the S R O in South Pond.
Yes. Thank you, South Pond, yes.
Now, if you, uh, if you recall, before we actually recess this meeting, we'll go back and revisit the appeal of revocation of business license of Keith Keller. I think we've, uh, given him ample opportunity to show up. Yes, sir?
Your honor, how was he notified that this would be taking place?
Um, on, I guess I spoke to him on the phone and then on May fourth, after we received his written notice for appeal, I mailed the letter and Bob Byas, our sergeant by us also served the letter in person to him, that is, placed business.
So, there's no way, there's no way he could not know that tonight was the night that he was supposed to be here?
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Guess he could not vote for the envelope, or if they're.
Yeah. But, verbal and written communication, uh, sort of send him the email and, uh, you know, smoke signals or something like that.
Have you provided an email and sent it that way also?
Okay. So I guess at this point, we will, uh, I'll entertain a motion to deny his appeal for his revocation of his business license. So we'll.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to deny the appeal for the revocation of this license by Keith Keller, perish. I'll vote for it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Actually, I'm not sure if we're revoked or if we didn't make it up this year.
Well, he's, he's appealing the not, the, I guess.
Not being renewed his license.
I guess. It, it was my soft-headed idea, pretty much, was make sure that all avenues have been.
Cover, try to cover all our bases.
Right. And I don't think there really is a basis for appeals, it just didn't pan.
Okay. So, with that, uh, are there any more as may arise?
I have a question going forward.
Yes, sir?
Unlike the, I believe we have statutory authority with respect, place up on Allen Street enforcing the liquor license, it's clear in the statute, what we can do, what we can't do, especially closing the business. In the morning. We'll probably talk to Keller. I'm not sure unless someone on this board convinces me differently, that we have statutory authority of which to say, close the door. I think we can summons them, as we have in the past, summons them for operating a business without a license. He has one in his hand right now for court date of June fifteen. Unless someone tells me different. I don't know that I have the statutory authority of which to say, lock the door.
I think the difference between the business on Allen Street.
Yes.
They had a liquor license.
Correct.
Where Keller did not.
What's the ordinance, Joe?
What's that?
What's the ordinance, Joe?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the ordinance actually, the version of the ordinance.
I've read the ordinance.
It's been a while since I've ever.
Till I'm blue in the face of it. I just need to make sure that we're right, if we make a move, and I think we, we should.
Can you issue him an additional?
Yes.
Uh, summons if he, if he's operating a business continually?
No doubt about it.
Each day would be a separate.
Each day would be a separate thing.
Each day would be a separate charge.
And they would just keep stacking up until.
Yes.
Initial court date?
Yes.
And it needs to be like dominoes all in, uh.
I, I got no problem with that whatsoever, that's the business, which I mean, call balls and strikes. I, I got no problem with that.
Do you have any say, Merrick? On this?
Not really, I think, uh, what Larry's intending to do is, it sounds like, uh, I mean, particularly if he decides to issue out a ticket, that I think that it is correct that, uh, a different day is a different violation. Uh, if he's continuing to operate without a license, he's ignoring the previous ticket, is apparently what's happening.
He asked if he could shut the doors down, is what he asked. Does he have the right to do that, is what he asked?
Can he go basically?
Yes, can he go over and tell him, don't open your doors, that's what he asked.
Well, there, it says upon revocation suspensions or non-renewal of the license unless evaded the license, he shall not, shall immediately cease all business for lack regulated of the license. I guess the only thing is, is, does Larry have the authority to say, you're in violation of the ordinance, you must cease operation? I guess, is that a lawful order of a officer?
To cease operation, right, that, that's the word I'm looking for, to cease operation. Does that mean I have statutory authority to lock the door? This is not a liquor license, this is a simple business license. Cease operation. I don't want to put myself, the police department, or us in a position that we can't defend.
Right.
What are your thoughts, Merrick?
Well, if he doesn't cease operation, uh, a ticket can be issued, I mean, that, that, that's ultimately what can be done.
What's the, uh, what's the fine, I guess, for, for that, do you know?
There is a maximum fine, which in municipal divisions up to five hundred dollars.
So for each ticket, that could be five hundred dollars a day?
For each violation, now. My sergeant sitting here has, has as good an idea. We could request a warrant to the, through April. And that is a condition of the bond with respect to the business, that it not be open until such time.
It's all fees and.
The matter is.
Accusate.
The matter is satisfied.
Is that upon being found guilty or is that upon?
Just satisf- satisfaction of the debt to open, has nothing to do with adjudication of what we got cooked on June fifteenth.
Right, if you said it is a bond condition, as long as he's out, once you arrest him on that warrant, as long as he's out on that bond, that's a condition of bond. So if he were to open the business before that case in the jury can be in court, then his bond would be revoked and a higher warrant would be reissued.
Right.
And he would be rearrested for that offense.
Thank you, Joe, that would come to me later, not.
Well.
Hopefully it wouldn't come to that, right, like hopefully, so.
Well, and that's weird, I mean, there's a guy who keeps operating business and not paying his business license and, and.
They still made a warrant.
Yeah, and this, this board has made it clear that you don't want that to happen.
So, what's to prevent him, he can still work on his own vehicle?
I guess, he could, yes? All right, here's where I'm gonna leave this.
Yeah.
So.
Can, can other people come and pick up their vehicles?
What we do on, uh, A J's? Didn't we close in there?
They closed before it got to that point.
We, yes, we made a move. And they closed their house.
Yeah.
We made a move, they closed. We're gonna go over there in the morning. We'll wrap summons.
If, if he's working, that his business is open.
No doubt about it.
But he does, he's had it open every day since then.
Every day since then, and here it is, almost June first.
And, but for a, it, it happened to fall that this month, there is a conference and so there is no law, we don't have a municipal law day this month, so that's why it's, we're waiting until, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, most available court date is June fifteenth, right. All right.
So we're just gonna write tickets, is that what we're gonna do? Probably gonna go.
Sounds like.
Probably gonna stretch the warrant.
Addison, someone with a license to practice law, not a license to enforce the law.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to put us, or the city, in a position that we can't defend.
Right. Well, I think, based on our ordinance, we would be able to defend running a summons every day that he's operating his business without license. Okay. I don't know if we could defend going and pat on the door, telling him, you get work.
I'd like to pursue the, the option that you guys talked about, so.
Yeah.
Give Merrick a chance to look at it when he's not on camera, and make a.
Yeah. Well, thank you, thank you.
There's a disadvantage to making a legal decision on camera. There's none of us in this case would be allowed.
Like you're sleeping there. All right. A, uh, motion to recess.
I make a motion to recess of June first.